And we call the Committee on Finance of the Whole to order. If we could please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Gordon, do I need to announce each of the councilors who are here, or will you do that? Do we, will we announce?
So I'm not sure if that's necessary.
Okay, all right, yep, no, we're all set. The first one before us, we are doing the discussion of the 2023 budget with the following departments. We have the mayor up first, which is on page two. Mayor, would you like to come up? Welcome.
Thank you, welcome. So, the budget that I have is pretty straightforward, and I'll answer any questions on the overall budget as well, if you'd like to ask. I think the one item on my budget that will jump out is the funding that we've provided for contracts that have not been settled yet. And as in past years, we usually put that money there, and then as a contract gets settled, we'll make the, we'll come down to the council, of course, to get the approval of the contract, and then we'll make the transfer from, ask for transfer from my line item to the different bearing departments that settle.
Okay.
And we do, which is, we have signed a memorandum of agreement with the department heads. That's the Teamsters Union, so we'll probably be, you know, looking to fund that after the budget's passed. And I indicated to the Teams that it'll be July 1st, that we'd be, you know, coming down from the council getting approved. So now we're outstanding, we have the teachers, we have the library, and we also have the police department that have not settled.
Do we have any questions for the mayor?
Just back up to clarify, the teachers are settled, we settled them for a one-year contract. They're still under contract till August 30th, so we're not out of contract. We are settled, we're working on a new, a new deal with them, but they are.
You settled for one year, is it different than what it was?
No, it's the same, we settled last year for a 1% increase, which we came to talk to you about, but they're not out of contract, so they still, you know, they're still, they're still in contract.
Right, okay.
Any questions on this?
Yes, Councilor Gaetley.
Hi, how you doing tonight?
Good, how are you all doing?
Do you believe the money you have here will suffice till July 1st? Or you figure you're gonna have to come back in and see us some more?
I think we should be okay, you know, it all depends on, you know, as you're aware, that with police, they file for, they file for arbitration, so we're at the JLMC, we're at the preliminary proceedings. We're still hopeful we'll be able to settle it sooner than later. But, you know, I think, I think we should have enough in there to cover the contracts.
That's all I got.
Anyone else? Okay. Well, yeah, thank you so much, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am.
Next up, we have the Law Department, which is on page eight. Hello, welcome.
Hello, good evening. I don't have anything prepared, so, but the one change you will see in my salary and maintenance budget is that I finally, after a year and a half, have a new person in my office, Teresa Borelli. She's terrific, so if you call or come by, please do so, and say hello to Teresa. She's, so far, she's working out very, very well. I do see that the mayor cut my legal assistance budget a little bit. There should be some money left over from this year. We do have the JLMC, which tends to be a lot of money with respect to outside legal counsel. And we do, for legal assistance, we have a couple of appeals. One that's pending for the Montvale Ave roadway taking, and hopefully we'll get by with, out any appeals regarding the New Boston Street Bridge. And I'm hoping that's adequate, otherwise it's pretty much all the same. Travel and meetings, I don't anticipate, the courts are starting to do a lot of work via Zoom or WebEx. Unfortunately, the ABCC is using Microsoft Teams, which is awkward. But a lot of, there's not a lot of travel, and the claims we get, I just try to handle the smaller claims. The larger ones do go to the insurance company. But if somebody, something comes in with like a flat tire, $50 or something, I may, I may just resolve that with them directly, rather than making them go through the, to our insurance company. Most of the last year has just been a lot of labor that's been going on, grievances, the negotiations. We haven't, we haven't settled the DPW either. And the library people have not even approached us. So we don't know when that would, is gonna even start, or when it will end. So if anybody has any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Do we have any questions for Ellen? That's wonderful. Counselor Gaetley.
Hi.
Oh, hello.
How you doing tonight?
I'm just fabulous, how are you?
Okay. On your, on your, don't get me going. On your claims damages PMP, you requested only $2,000?
That's all I was given.
Yeah.
But we, you know, we don't, for claims, we don't usually have a lot of them. I mean, we used to be inundated with pothole claims, but the streets are in really good shape. The DPW with knocked over mailboxes and those other little things that happen with snow plowing, they take care of them internally. They have somebody go up, but it's only the smaller things that I will, like, take till, you know, take care of, so that I don't bother them with having to go to the insurance agency.
Well, something like, I was looking at it, last year it was $129,000, the year before, huh, that's quite a bit of change, now it's down to $2,000.
Well, that was, the claims, it's over $132?
One of the things we, Ellen told us, we are, we are, we are with MYHA, so a lot of the cases, a lot of the cases we send to the MYHA to defend, and then we get a deductible. So we have a deductible, like, on a sore back up, it's, I think the deductible is 7,500, or?
Some of the bigger ones are 25, and then?
So we've provided in the insurance account, the deductible is there, so if there's a claim, we're responsible for the deductible and everything else is covered. So, like Ellen said, the smaller cases, she'll handle if it's a nuisance, and generally, that money is sufficient.
Is this, I'm just trying to remember, we paid out $129 last year, was that the?
That was the real estate.
The real, yeah, the real estate claim from North Woburn, Mr. Brusseau?
That was part of the, the tally, Brusseau, remember that whole issue up there with the tax taking? So we did come down from the council, and I think we had to get the money approved, that's why it's showing up in that line item.
It, we had to pay back, it was a certain amount of money that he overpaid in taxes for properties he didn't own.
Okay.
But there was a transfer in, but most, that was, that was a rarity. Most of the cases that we handle, that there is, we have the deductibles to cover. In this one, this case, although they defended us, they defended us, but it wasn't.
They, they only covered attorney's fees, they didn't cover the damages going back. So that's why, there was a big transfer in, but it went out just for that one case, and that's rather unusual, that doesn't usually happen.
Okay, I'm satisfied.
I have a question, Ellen, a comment too. I'm very happy that you finally have somebody else in your office.
I am too.
After all this time. What exactly will Teresa be doing, just a little bit of everything, or?
Right now, I'm, I'm training her on how to handle all of the contracts that come in. Instead of my drafting, especially this time of year, it gets a little busy. But, so it's, she's had a bit of a learning curve with the municipal contracts. She did a lot of contracts in one of her other positions. She worked for the Gutierrez Company in Burlington, so she's used to contract management. But she's, I've asked her to do not just the extensions that Diane had been doing, but actually drafting all of the contracts, and I'm helping her learn to do that, which takes a lot off of my plate. And then there are some other things, like keeping me, you know, organized. She's very organized, and sometimes I'm just, when you're doing, taking care of five different things, it's difficult. But that, we're starting with that.
Oh, that's wonderful.
Believe it or not, she still remembers shorthand.
Wow.
She asks me questions, it's remarkable.
Well, that's fantastic, that's gonna really help. That's it, anybody else, any questions? Thank you, Ellen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ellen.
Next on the agenda, we have the Treasurer Collector, page seven. Hi, Tim.
Evening, councilmembers. A few changes this year, I mean, our office has been pretty steady this year. Things have sort of returned to somewhat what it was prior to the pandemic. And traffic, which is, it's a very busy office, so traffic has definitely increased significantly over the last year. Thankfully, we do have, the city has put up the protective shields, but we also have the collection box out back, which is a big help, because we do see a lot of people use that. So, staff's been working very hard, we've had the same staff in the office for almost five years now in total, and it's been, worked out very well. It's a lot more consistent, having people there on a consistent basis, so it's worked out very well. We've got a good group that works hard, so, as you can see my budget, there's a couple areas, line items, that we've increased, equipment maintenance. It's primarily due to a, the copy, the office copier, which gets used significantly with people coming in wanting copies of their tax bill and such. That just went down recently, and we're just waiting for that, hopefully to be repaired. If it isn't repairable, that would cause the need for a new copier printer, which could be in the area of five to six, five to $6,000. That's part of the increase. We have also maintenance on the equipment, we have two other printers on top of that, just sole printers, one for payroll, and both of those are over 11, 12 years old now. And what they're doing, the IT thinks, say, we can ride them out a little longer, but never know when one of those is going down, that's in the same area as the copier, as far as the cost, so. We also looking at some areas of, you know, increasing, managing our storage a little better, so we've got some costs in shelving units for that. So, that's where the increase comes on equipment maintenance. Binding is a slight increase, $200, basically that's the cost of inflation, and the company has just had to move to a new site, and so their costs plan to go up. We haven't got the final prices for this fiscal year yet, they're in transition right now. Postage mailing, that's always, that's, the pressure's been on the last couple of years, you know, rising pressure on that budget item. So, this year we expected, it was right on last year, this year we expect it to go over. There's a proposed postage increase that's proposed to go, happen sometime in July, technically, possibly, which could go up another two cents, so that could drive that cost. So, other than that, everything's level funded. Frida, happy to take any questions.
Any questions for Tim? Counselor Gaetley?
Hi, Tim.
Hi, Councilor Gaetley, how are you?
How you doing?
Good, thanks, how are you?
You and your, you and your office do a great job.
Thank you.
You know, it's, it's incredible amount of work that you people do for what you have. Only question I have is on the tax delinquency. How are you doing with that?
One item I note, I should note, is that we just recently collected on a long outstanding tax title balance in the amount of approximately $750,000 on a property down on Olympia Ave. So that was a significant payoff to the city for that tax title that's been outstanding for several years. So that's, on top of that, we're probably up about $300,000 in collections this year. We're also, that area is, we've had a lot of transitions with some of the banks, and also our tax debt attorneys, that just went through a new, they sort of split, the partners split into their own firms, so we went with one, and that's been transitioning for the last couple of months. Just happened probably November, December, January timeframe. And so we're sort of ramping up, getting, they've gone on their own new firm, and a couple of the partner and a couple of his staff have gone with them. So, things are remaining steady, they're working hard, they're collecting. We're right on with collections this year, similar to past years, but the $750,000 is notable. That's something that was a significant help and collection on the tax title side this year.
That's great, you knew I was gonna ask that question, right?
I do.
You had it all ready for me, didn't you?
I got that ready, it's in the back pocket every year.
Yeah, yeah.
I just, that, that's, the tax title has been going smoothly. Again, they, they assist in a great way with all the legal matters in the land court. But on top of that, I think we're, since they've taken over, we've been really up to date on that, making people, you know, I think there's a tone set now after the last several years of being really, really on top of that, is that people don't let their balances go, nor do we let, help them, enable them to let them go that long, before we're working with them to try and pay that off. It's been tough times recently, but we try and help them, as does our tax debt attorneys find options. But we sort of consistently work with them, as opposed to not doing anything at all. Sometimes when you don't pursue them, or work with them, or communicate with them, they feel that it's okay, and that's where we've got, in the past years ago, got into trouble with that tax title balance significantly increased, because they thought it was, no one's chasing me, so it's okay. But we try and work with them and present options for them. It's not a lot of options, but as long as you're working with them and reminding them, the, the collections have been sort of, far more manageable than the increased balances we've had in the past.
Very good. Thank you, you do a good job.
Thank you.
Counselor Dillon.
Jimmy, how are you today?
I'm doing very good, thank you.
I wanna thank you and your staff, every time I have a question, phone call, stop in, you're always right there, informative, take care of the issue, whether it be for a constituent. Recently, my wife, who had an excise problem with a leased vehicle, that got very complicated, and, yeah, people took care of it and gave her great direction. And I know that would fall for everyone that comes in there. So, again, you fall under the category that many of the department heads, you deal with a lot of our constituents, some of the departments, not so much, they're more in a city hall works. You guys are right out there, you do a great job, and I hear good things from people, thank you.
That's good to know.
Anyone else, any questions for Tim? I think that's it, thank you very much, Tim.
Thank you, Tim.
Thank you, Tim.
Next on the agenda, we have Recreation, on page 55. Welcome, Rory.
Good evening, how are you all? So, there's a couple, a couple small increases to my budget this year. An increase to special activities of 1,500, to, so we wanna do a little bit more special events over at Spence Farm, so that'll help us with that. Some more money in the pool chemicals, obviously the increase with gas and everything, pool chemicals are, that's definitely increasing, and there was another smaller one. I think utilities as well with that, but other than that, anybody has any questions?
Any, yes, Counselor Gaetley?
Hi.
Hi.
How are you?
I'm well.
All right, that program for the special needs for summer?
Yeah, we got a lot of, a couple of programs coming up.
Yeah, you still got your $12,000 in funding?
We do, yep.
Okay.
We're doing a lot more during, during the school year. I actually just, I actually just came from a walking club with a couple of students too, that I, I've been running myself, so.
Yeah, it's working all good.
Yeah.
Yeah, you do a good job.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
You're doing a real good job. And I'm interested to see what can happen down there on Green Street.
Yeah, we've had a lot of responses to that survey, that we just sent out, over 500 in less than about 24 hours, so, a lot of good responses.
Yeah. It's worth it.
Yeah, it will be, when it's done.
It's about time.
Yeah, it is.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Dillon.
Thank you, how are you tonight, Rory?
I'm well, how are you?
Again, you're one of these departments that are out there with the public all the time, and it's, it's very reassuring what I'm hearing back from constituents, what I see everywhere, just positive reviews, just, you're for the kids. And it's time that we really focus and try to give the kids everything we can.
Yep.
You do a great job with that. I go to work and come home, I spend all the time, and many nights I see your car there with an activity going on, and it really does give me a great amount of pleasure to see that building being used to the capacity that you guys use it. It was a great gift that we got, and it's great to see you use it to the full capacity, as well as all the other things you do. So you guys do a great job, and I appreciate you taking care of the kids.
Yeah, seven days a week, it's, it's pretty much has something going on in it, so, it's nice.
And I know you do stuff with not just kids.
Yes, a lot of adult programs, babies programs over there, so there's a lot going on.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Farullo.
Rory, I just want to say thank you for all you do, not just what you do, but how you do it, you reach out, you're inclusive, you have special programs.
Thank you.
I just, you're doing a tremendous job, and I just want to say thank you for that.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Counselor Viola.
Rory, once again, I want to echo what my fellow councillor said. You and your department do a great job for the kids at Woburn, give them a great outlet to basically do things, to stay out of trouble, thank you.
Yes, yeah, it'll be a nice summer this summer. Hopefully back to normal.
Yes.
And I just want to say thank you for the Chelsea Pool, and all the maintenance you guys do up there, on the tennis courts, and the pool, and my constituents up there, they love that pool. They absolutely love it.
North Woburn's really come a long way, Farullo Field, in the past couple of years, with all the new activity that we've had up there, and it really looks nice.
Yeah, North Woburn's come a long way, and I appreciate everything you guys do down there.
Definitely, yes.
Thank you, you and your team, thank you.
And I just want to thank you, when I first got on the council, it just seemed like there were so many things, so many different issues with Gonzales Park, and then, of course, the collapsed school, and then just lots of different other recreational things that were an issue. And you were there for me, and you helped me through it, and, gosh, I've gotten nothing this year, not even one complaint or anything, so I'm really happy you're doing a great job. Thank you so much for your help. Okay, we're all set?
Thanks, Rory.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have the Planning Department, WRA, page 15.
Evening, everybody. So my budget has just about all the same lines that it had last year. None have been added, and for the most part, most of them are level funded. The changes really in my office relate to personnel. My assistant, Dan Orr, who held the position of Planner/Grant Writer, has left for Greeter Pastures in Manchester, New Hampshire. So I have sort of realigned the responsibilities of that position. And the other one in the office was the Staff Planner. And so now I'm going to have an Assistant Planner, who will help me with the planning board related stuff, in addition to all of the management of the office generally. And then a new position called Sustainability Coordinator and Grant Writer. Still be doing a lot of the grants for, really, some of them are written directly for my department, but many of them are assisting other departments to write their grants. And we're gonna keep a focus, or have a focus on sustainability. Many communities around us have hired dedicated managers to try to handle, or to approach and reach goals relative to energy conservation, sustainability practices in the community. And we're gonna realign that job description to cover and encompass those sorts of responsibilities. It is something that most communities have been working on for a number of years. The mayor's been anxious to do more than we have been doing, although we've been certainly being able to accomplish some things, not as much as we would like. So, we're gonna reorganize those two positions, pay them a little differently, but other than that, everything in the budget is the same.
Counselor Concanon.
Hi, Gina, just a quick question, an update on the Economic Development Coordinator?
Yes, so we've, we advertised, I've done interviews with three or four people.
That was my question.
Having Dawn Queenen from the Redevelopment Authority, and the two gentlemen that served on the Woburn Development and Finance Corporation, just kind of sit in on the interviews with us to ask questions. All of the people we've met and interviewed so far have been great, but none of them, we feel, have been the right fit for Woburn. So, I just re-advertised, slight wording change, and re-advertised the position in the APA, the Massachusetts Chapter of the American Planning Association. Of course, we have it posted on the city website as well. And then we did a national posting too, through the APA. So we're hopeful the search continues, but we have resumes that were submitted as recently as this week. The HR department sent over a few to me, so we're hopeful that we'll get somebody as soon as we find the right person.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
Counselor Gaetley.
Hi, how you doing?
Good evening, I'm good, how are you?
I'm doing all right.
It's nice to see you.
Nice to see you too. My question was, is the, the job you had open, the grant writer?
Yes.
You know, it's very important, gotta get that filled.
Yeah, yes.
It's worth his weight in gold, and he's got, over the years, you are the grant writer. They've got a lot of grants, they've got a lot of money for the city.
Yes, and there's a lot of them out there.
Social revenue that we can't let go. We're gonna get somebody in there that knows what they're doing. Start getting some more grant money ready for us, you know?
Agreed.
One person, two, you can't do it all, you have to have somebody that looks at the books, looks at the advertisements, knows where to look and see where the money is, and see where we can get.
There's a lot out there too, the federal money that's come in, and some of the stuff that Governor Baker has proposed. There's a lot of funding out there, and we don't want to get behind the eight ball. So, we've revised that job description, got an okay to advertise, so I expect the advertisement will be in within the week.
Good.
Yeah.
Sooner the better.
Yeah, for sure.
You're gonna be pretty busy this, this year, everything that's going on, especially over on Commerce Way, and, and New Boston Street, Merrimack Street, all the stuff that's going on.
There's a lot of stuff.
The planning board's got their dock at full, as, as is the city council. And we have to be very careful in what we do, and how we do it, you know? So, it's always been a pleasure to work with you, and I'm sure it'll be a pleasure in the near future to do the same.
Thank you, Dick, I appreciate that very much.
Let's all stay on the same page, it's gonna be a busy year. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselor Dillon.
I want to say thank you for myself, for the guidance and the help you've given me. Never mind the planning board, your main job, what you help out with the Woburn Redevelopment Authority, where I'm a liaison to, as well as the Traffic Commission. I'm always pleased to see you there, because you have the background, you have the knowledge, and you help us get things done. So I appreciate your guidance and your attention to the matters that I'm involved with, with you, thank you.
Well, thank you, thank you for the kind words, and it's been great to have an active liaison. It's fun having you at the meetings, it's good to know that you're up to speed and can share that when, when needed with your colleagues. It's fun having you at the meetings, it's good to know that you're up to speed and can share that when, when needed with your colleagues. So, I thank you right back.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I think we're all set. Thank you so much, Tina.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tina.
Next on our agenda is Human Resources. Hi Elaine, welcome.
Hi. Just wanted to say that, um, thank you for having me. This may be my last budget meeting, and I want to thank you all for your support. But I, my budget is level funded, and I really have no changes at all, so if anybody has any questions for me. I do want to say, one of the things I did work on this year was COVID funding. When our employees were all out sick for COVID, I was able to apply it to the state, and I was able to get some money back from the state. I think I got about $40,000. It was a start, it was something, I did it just for the city, the schools didn't do it, but I, I don't work for the schools. But, you know, that, I, you know, look at that as something that I accomplished this year. So if anybody has any other questions for me at all?
Councilor Gately.
I want to thank you for all you, all you did up there. You took a place that was pretty well screwed up, and straightened it out with your programs you started, and, and the personnel that you were working with and everything, you did a fabulous job.
Can I make a comment? I would like to say that my assistant, Karen Crawford, is great, she's excellent. She's really helped me through everything, and we work as a great team together, so.
Always very friendly, always helpful, helpful. I, I just hope the person that's going to take your place is half the person you are.
Thank you.
Good shape.
Thank you.
Thank you for all you did.
Thank you.
Yes, Councilor DeMers.
Thank you. Elaine, we've known each other for a long time.
Yep.
Going back to when I grew up with your son. So I just wanted to say thank you very much for the guidance back then, when I might have needed a kick in the butt on the playground. But also, being very helpful when it came to HR issues and onboarding here at the city, you know? Coming from the school, uh, school department, working on the school committee, it was a different animal over there. And I got to see through your office a lot of what happens here on the city side, and a lot of the work that goes in. So I appreciate everything that you've done over the years, and thank you for your guidance when I had questions, I appreciate it. Wishing you well in your retirement.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Any other questions? Thank you, Elaine.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Elaine.
Happy retirement.
Next on the agenda is Conservation, on page 14. Hi Teresa.
Good evening, how is everyone? It's nice to be here tonight. The budget at request is level funded, that is what you have before you. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions? Yeah, Councilor Gately?
I'm just looking again at the, to be determined for your, your head clerk again, has been funded in the last 10 years, or better?
Longer.
Longer?
Yes, it, that position has never been funded in the time that I've worked here.
I'm only trying to go back to, I don't, maybe I want to make myself look older than I am. Yeah, you do, you guys do a good job, and your committee, your commission does a real good job.
Thank you very much.
Sure direction, I'm sure all the work is coming up in the future, get your hands full.
Thank you very much, and I also do want to thank the members of this body. You have all been very supportive of the Conservation Commission, both with budget and also helping out at Conservation Day and different events. And I know that you're, you've been interested in the different programs that we've had. We haven't been, we haven't been able to do the tree program, that's the one regret that I have for this year. We did try, had some issues with getting supply, supply chain and demand and all of that. But we do hope to do that next year, so I will, I'm hoping that the mayor will let me carry over money to next year, so that we can do a program. I suspect that the prices will be higher, as they are with just about everything. But our other programs, we have been able to do the Community Gardens and the Tree Program and Conservation Day, which was insanely windy, I know some of you were there. It was a very, very cold and windy day, and then right after that, we had summer. So, anyway, but I do want to thank you all, you've definitely been supportive of us over the years, thank you.
Community Gardens?
Yes.
Who's in charge over there now?
So, right now, there are two commission members. Anthony Langone is kind of the primary one, and then Jerry Lones is assisting him. I mean, the, the entire commission assists, but they're the two that are doing the bulk of the work without the signups. And, and then Anthony Langone has set up some, like, office hours down there, and so I think that's been going well.
All the spots are taken?
It's a lot of, it's a very, very popular program. They're working really hard to try to get in, there is a waiting list, they're working very hard to try to get people in.
Did you, uh, did you guys give up on that tree farm that you had there a few years ago?
So, the tree farm, unfortunately, it wasn't successful. I mean, we, we had hoped that it would be, we had some issues where I think some deer ate some of the trees that were there, and then it was hard to get, get it watered, and different things like that. It was something that we really wanted to have work out, but it ended up being a little too labor intensive and just maybe not the right spot for it, not the right fit for it. But the gardens themselves have been incredibly popular, and.
You gave it a good try anyway.
We, we tried, we tried, it was kind of sad.
Labor intensive, trying to grow trees.
Yeah.
Thank you for all you do.
Thank you very much.
Councilor Viola.
Teresa, thank you for everything you do. Recently, I actually got a tour of the Community Gardens from Anthony and Jerry.
Oh, great.
And I want to say that everything down there looks absolutely amazing, glad to see that, it's getting used for those, uh, those things, and hope to see more of that in the future.
Fantastic, thank you, I appreciate the feedback, I will share it with them.
Anyone else? Councilor Dillon.
I've also heard on the Community Gardens, positive, positive feedback from the community. And just keep up the good work. I know you guys have the, the, the serious work you have to do with the subdivisions and roads and such, but that's a fun thing, and you got great people working on it for you, so.
Thank, yes.
Keep up the good work.
Yes, well, the, the commission members work very hard on, on the program, so thank you very much. I will share all of your, your compliments with them.
All right, thank you so much, Teresa.
Thank you, I hope you have a nice evening.
Thank you, Teresa.
Next on the agenda, we have Purchasing, which is on page five. Hello, welcome.
Good evening, council members, hello, how's everybody doing tonight?
How are you, Aratio?
I'm well, how are you?
Very well, thank you.
Nice to see you, nice to see you, all of you. Councilor Dillon, I am not one of the department heads that is out front with the people, but I'm more of a behind-the-scenes kind of person. But the purchasing department is pretty straightforward, you can see there, doesn't take a lot to run the unit, but I think we do a good job up there. If you have any specific questions, I'd be more than happy to point out some of the positive things we've done throughout the year. I'm not sure if you guys, if you folks know about specific projects. I know you're aware of everything on the whole throughout the city, but any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer for you.
Yes, Councilor Gately.
Hey, how you, how you doing?
How are you?
I'm doing good. You must have your hands full with the, with the inflation and everything's going. Prices you thought were locked in last week, they're not locked in no more, and they're going up by eight to 10%. And, you know, delivery fees have gone crazy, and you're keeping up with all that?
Uh, that's a very accurate statement. Yes, we've had some, actually some, some good fortunes this past year, where we've, I say we, myself and the mayor are on the same page, where we thought of this well over a year ago, and we were preparing ourselves, and we were able to forecast some of these issues. Nobody knew what, how, how deep and how big the issues would be, but we were able to take advantage of some early and aggressive approach on our end with purchasing and, purchasing from nationwide contracts, consortiums, just finding creative ways where we could kind of save some money, and making some decisions ahead of time, as opposed to waiting and being preemptive and proactive, instead of reactive to a situation. So that's really panned out well for us this year.
So you're locking in a lot of contracts?
I do, we were able to lock in some really nice pricing for all of our buildings with ga, nat, natural gas for our buildings, electricity for our buildings, gas for our fleet vehicles. We, we were able to lock those in, and we're secure with the pricing for fiscal year '23, definitely. So we did really well, especially on the gas side. We were able to really take advantage of the capacity that we have here in the city, and take advantage of some really, really attractive pricing. And the mayor was able to be very aggressive, aggressive on his approach, and look at things a, a little bit further than maybe we would in the past. Look at things two, three years out, as opposed to just next year, or 18 months. And we were able to lock in, save the city out. I don't have specific numbers, but on the gas side alone, I think we're going to be saving about close to $100,000 this year alone, just for one commodity for the city building, so it's excellent, excellent.
You do a good job.
Well, thank you, I appreciate that, I love my job, I say that every year, so I think I've got the best job in the city.
I've had some dealings with you, and you're pretty, you're pretty well honored what you do.
Thank you.
Thanks for your, thanks for the input, thanks for your work you do.
Thank you for your support, I appreciate that.
Councilor Concanon.
Uh, Araz, just a, a quick update maybe on the fire station from a purchasing perspective?
Yes, sir, I think we're right on track, I mean, you can see the beautiful building is taking shape. Once we were out of the ground, as they say in the construction, once we were out of the ground, things really moved along and progressed right on pace, and if not, some instances, ahead of schedule. From my input with this project, from the purchasing side, we're 100% on board with all the contracts that need to be done. We're caught up, we're ahead of the curve actually on some of the things, we've pre-ordered much of the equipment. And one of, a great example that, give credit to Chief Kenton at the fire station, he was able to find some of the equipment that he needed on a national cooperative type of contract. And just one item alone, these huge lifts that pick up these fire trucks, imagine how big the lifts have to be to pick up these fire trucks. And we needed six of them for the new fire station, and he was able to find them on a national contract, and he saved the city, I think like $60,000, just on one item alone. So we've done that with many different things, the furniture, fixtures and equipment, we did a bid, and we purchased all of our stuff off of pre-vet state, state contracts. Excellent, on budget. Yeah, things are going really well, all the technology contracts are up, we're up to date with. Everything is in line for, for this new building, very excited, very excited. Yeah?
Wonderful. Councilor Dillon.
Appreciate what you do, I'm sure your job over the last couple of years with the supply chain, demand and interruption has got more challenging. I know I have a similar, I do all the purchasing for the construction and property management and real estate development. And I know there's things that are difficult just to get, so.
The, the basic items are, are difficult, and then especially if you're doing specialty projects, it's the lead time on some of these items. It's, we've been trying to get the generator fixed for, the emergency generator, if we have a bad storm in the city, is located at the Comcast, Zion Hill, I believe it's called, right? So we've been working, I think it's the third police chief now that, and no disrespect, chief, we weren't able to do it on y'all watch, but I think we'll finally get it done, the generator project. It took us a year to purchase a generator, and you would think you just go to Home Depot, Lowe's, or a big store and buy it, but it was a 12-month lead time for the generator, and it's finally getting delivered next week sometime, but it's been a long time coming.
Looking out for the city, financially, and able to keep it all together with all the, the different problems that we're experiencing on a daily basis.
It's interesting, definitely.
Councilor Viola. Oh, nope. Oh, yes.
Are you finding, that was all the good news. Are you finding, what are you finding the most difficult for you to, to get a hold of in the city? That's causing the city to have a little bit of a deficiency here or there?
I fear that no matter how much I, I tried to plan for that, I don't think I have the solution just yet. But I'm finding that people are, and I don't think it's just me, or us for the city, I, I think as a whole, everything is so volatile that we like to do, we, the city, like to do a contract for one year of service, one year of working with someone to buy goods from them if we need pipe or supplies for DPW. I can't get people to give me pricing for a month, never mind a year, or two years, or three years, some of our vendors.
No one's locking in.
Yeah, it's, it's too volatile. Some of the vendors don't want to put their neck out there and guarantee us pricing, that they can't get guaranteed for themselves. I mean, it makes sense, but we're running into an issue where some of my vendors are pushing back on signing a renewal contract for their second or third year term with the city for pricing they gave us three years ago. So that, this is the problem that we're facing now. Some of these vendors are in their third year of a contract, so they gave us this pricing three and a half years ago. And some of them are pushing back, saying, well, they can't guarantee the pricing that they thought they could three years ago, two years ago. And it's been tough to get vendors to respond to some of our bids.
And with that, the increase in these, these prices on certain products, we can absorb that in, in the future without?
Well, I, I think we can with some proper planning, having the right people in the, in place to make decisions when decisions need to be made. That's why I think it's better to be proactive as opposed to reactive on, on these things. If we wait too long, we're not going to get a seat at the table, for lack of a better term. Again, it's hard to forecast the future, I think we're in a very good position as a whole. A lot of our service contracts were renewed, I'm not facing any major downtime on, I can't get service here for the DPW. None of that stuff has happened yet, and I hope it doesn't, obviously. But I think we will be prepared, we have avenues, we can be very creative with purchasing, and we have some short-term fixes that we can put in place, a little bridge. There's some opportunities for us to buy ourselves time if we do run into some of the issues that I can't forecast or can't stop as much as I would like to.
Well, I appreciate you, Bird, Doc.
Of course, thank you, I appreciate the support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Councilor Farullo.
I just want to say thank you for your ability to navigate the complex world of procurement. It's not as easy as calling all this stuff, you are, me and my time.
Well, I appreciate that.
Your support and empathize with you when you navigated through, through COVID. And I just, you're a great addition to the team 10 years ago, how long it's been.
Six, but I hope to make 10, definitely.
You were great to work with, your professionalism, and your ability to think outside the box and find stuff that needed to be found, I appreciate it. I'm sure the folks you deal with now appreciate it, so thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate the kind words, always good to me.
Okay, well, thank you so much, Aratio.
Have a great evening, I appreciate everything you do.
Okay, take care.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is the Health Department. Hi Jack, good evening, welcome.
I think this budget's from 34 years ago. I don't think it's changed much since then, completely level funded, couple of cuts, but other than that, it's the same one that I've presented for three decades. I'd love to hear any questions that you have.
Any questions? Yes, Councilor Farullo.
Just thank you for navigating through COVID, Jack, that's all, I saw the work you did, I, I appreciate you and your team.
Yeah, duck.
You got us through.
That was quite the time.
Councilor Gately.
Hi, Jack.
How are you, Dick?
How you doing?
Good.
Thank you for what you do and your, and your, people who work around you, you get a good group of people down there.
Yeah.
They do a really good job.
Well, they show their stuff, that's for sure.
Yeah.
COVID was a tough road to hoe, when the entire building, except for us, was empty, you know? And, you know, we had to do contact tracing every single day, and we did a lot of our own. We didn't pawn it off on the state, the mayor was, you know, wanted his numbers, and he got them, so they did a great job.
And you're not done yet?
No, I, I wish. I, I wish.
Yeah. I see, uh, the mayor cut $10,000 out of your, uh, your Sturgis Street fund.
My what?
Your remediation down on Sturgis Street.
Yep. Well, that's a, it's, it's every other year, Dick, that I do what's called, uh, a, uh, well, we do an enterprising step. We've been putting, um, sulfates in the wells down there. You know that the, uh, the, the two pump systems have been taken out of there. The wells still exist. We feed stuff directly into the wells and then every other year we do, we trench, we trench across the site. We have been seeing some, you know, good results, but, uh, when you look at where you are, uh, the, it's got to meet what's called, uh, a groundwater one standards.
Yeah.
And, uh, that's drinkable. So, uh, what we're doing now is just keeping it from, you know, going anywhere near the pond, you know? And, uh, it's, it's effective, but it still costs you, it's, it's a lot of, uh, it's a couple of sampling events a year and, uh, report writing. And, uh, it's a little tiresome because it takes so long, but, uh, the old weathered oil that's down there sits right on the interface between the groundwater and the dirt and, uh, it's hard to, it's, it's really hard to get out of there. So we keep working on it and it'll be for someone else, that's for sure.
You, you contain the plume.
Yes, indeed. It does, it, it's never made the pond, so it, it's all for the protection of the groundwater supply, so. And, uh, you do a good job down there.
You did, do a good job. You know, like a friend should really get, and you hear him every day, his amount of rats there in this city.
Oh.
Taking over the city. I think I saw one driving a taxi the other day.
My, my usual question, Dick, is it is it a two-legged one or a four?
It was a two.
It's unbelievable. I realize that, you know, they're, you know, a public health menace, but I find it hard to find anyone that wants to complain about the condition of a property or someone's trash or something that doesn't throw rats in on the pile.
Yeah.
Because it makes it, you know, makes it a much harder complaint. But, uh, we give everybody, I, I'm a licensed exterminator. I take care of the city's, uh, extermination needs. Uh, I have, uh, it's a, it's a very, very precarious position to be in because I've had, I, I usually treat catch basins, uh, as a, as a means of getting some, uh, poison into the environment to, to knock down any population where someone has seen it. And if you, once you treat, all hell breaks loose, you know? You'll see three times as many rodents as, as you thought there was there in the first place. So you've got to be careful about nuking them because they'll, they'll, they would probably overcome a neighborhood, you know? But there are a few areas in the city that I, I concentrate on where, you know, where there's been problems in the past and I, uh, you know, I give people what they need, you know?
I've seen some rats so big they could carry you away.
Hmm, well, the cats are running.
No, haven't been.
Sure.
Thank you, Jack, for what you do.
Councilor Viola.
Hey, Jack. Uh, where do we stand with the contract for waste management? How much longer do we have on this?
One year, we're, we're one year in. We're starting our second year in, uh, July. It's, uh, $4.4 million this year, uh, with an escalator for diesel fuel. When we signed the contract, uh, diesel fuel was, well, $4 a gallon. And I requested at that time, uh, I held up signing the contract because they were already trying to charge us more than the price of the fuel. I said, that's not fair. Let's start off with a range and it was between 285, uh, 385 and 415. And we're already paying, uh, $1,100 a month in additional, uh, fuel charges. They recalculated based on the Department of Energy's, uh, diesel fuel price for low sulfur diesel. And that was when it was under five bucks. So we, when they recalculated again in, in July, it'll be $30,000 or $40,000 more than, uh, what it, what it started out to be, just in fuel.
Right. And the other question I have is maybe we can look at maybe an extra pickup of, um, not recycling, but like the, um, tre- not trash, but, uh, leaves and those types of materials maybe during the summer.
Well, we do, we started off, Charles, as, as a department-approved recycling and composting plan. Uh, that is a bone of contention for the past five times that we've signed contracts. Uh, I, when I closed the landfill back in 2000, I left seven acres of land up there for a recycling center. And it got, uh, I had a road designed that came from Downbri Ave and right out onto, uh, the end of Merrimack Street, so we could have, uh, done the no trucking on, on Merrimack and it, it got blown up by the, you know, the, uh, the eco-activists that were, you know, assailing me when I was closing that place. Now, as you can see, there's 11,000 solar panels on top of it and somehow, geez, we're probably making three quarters of a million dollars a year on electricity. Not a bad deal. So, you know, and we, we've, I've complied with every, I'm, uh, well, I'm at least 15 years into a 30-year sam- sampling event. You've got to sample the, the, uh, solid waste guidelines require you to sample that site for 30 years and I'm way over half, half done with that. I, 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 I deal with the, uh, active gas collection system. Uh, we monitor that every month. Uh, there's both interior wells that we have a blower that sucks the methane out of the landfill and we also have perimeter wells around the outside, uh, to make sure that no methane escapes. Uh, there's, uh, source registration because it's a greenhouse gas, uh, you know, it, it adds to that. But, uh, you have to keep a constant draw on the 15 gas wells that are there so that gas doesn't leak out from underneath the cap. And then you can't suck too hard on the wells or you'll drag oxygen underneath because it's an anaerobic environment, you know, that the, uh, there, there's no oxygen, you know, it's deficient. So you don't want oxygen under there, obviously for fire reasons and stuff. So just keep going with that one. Every six months I do $13,000 worth of sampling and, uh, because you have to. So don't, uh, I'll just keep going.
Thank you.
I have a, a question for you, um, Jack. With the solar panels being on the landfill, I remember when we voted on that.
Yeah.
I mean, that was a little nerve-wracking, honestly, you know, to decide to do something like that. We were told that it wasn't going to do anything, that, you know, that, so I wanted to know...
The estimates, Joanne, were way down. They were, they were only going to be, so it was only going to make $200,000 worth of electricity and it's making a lot more than that.
But have you seen any of the levels of the gases change because of having the solar panels on there? So they did a good job putting it in?
I don't do that much of a study. Uh, every month I get the methane readings from each well, you know, and, uh, they don't change much, you know?
Okay.
When they go up, I run the, I run the, uh, I usually turn the blower on and let it run until it runs out of methane. It'll shut itself off, you know? So, uh, that's, that, that's all I'm trying to do is burn the methane off and, uh, does a good job of it. It's getting a little old though. It's getting rotted and, you know, it's metal, so it's getting a little rusty, so we'll probably have to replace that before too long, but...
If there was some sort of, um, hole or something that took place because of the, putting the solar panels in or whatever, or however they did it?
Oh, no, those are on top.
Would you know that? Yeah, would you know?
Sure. There's, there's, they, they, they don't penetrate the cap. The cap's two feet down.
Okay.
The plastic cap is two feet down and all of the panels up there are set in cement that are ground-mounted.
Okay, great.
There's no penetration into the, uh, the cap at all.
Okay, great. Okay. Any other questions? No? Thank you so much, Jack.
Ah, Joe.
Oh, I got nothing for you. Thank you, Joe. Doing a hell of a job.
Thank you very much.
Okay, bye-bye. Uh, next on the agenda, the assessors. Hello there.
Good evening.
Good evening. How are you?
Before I get started, I'd like to recognize, uh, one of our board members, Lori Maderos is in the crowd, and also Janine Vintruska, our residential appraiser, uh, who does an outstanding job and I would really like to, uh, thank her for all she does in front of the council. I don't think she gets enough recognition, so thank you, Jan.
Um, also, our board members, I'd like to thank our chairman, Bar McGuire, and David Ruffo, and, uh, also our staff. They're outstanding. I mean, customer service and what they do, uh, Rean McBride, Rean and I, and also we do still have, uh, Andy Cream with us part-time and he is, uh, still extraordinarily helpful, uh, with our office on two to three days a week. Um, before we get jumping into the budget, if you look at the last line item on the budget, you'll see the class 504 valuation. And, uh, I'd like to thank the council and the mayor for, uh, you may remember a year ago, uh, came before the council seeking a $4,000 increase and that was based on, um, a recent court case between Mass Electric Company and the Commissioner of Revenue. And it was a key case, um, as far as on how these, uh, utilities were valued. Uh, basically the utilities were looking at netbook value, which basically was the historic value of the improvement and then depreciating it down where they stated some of these things were worthless and had no value, although they were still in full operation. Then the other side of that, the case was they wanted replacement costs new less depreciation. So what's the cost of equipment today, less depreciating back to however long that the equipment was in existence? It was a long case and, um, it ended up being that the, uh, courts ruled that the valuation method would be a blended method between the actual replacement cost new less depreciation and the netbook value. And what does that mean for the city? It meant, meant big dollars. By you folks approving us to hire a consultant to do additional work on this last year, that $4,000 line item, $2,000 for each utility, it resulted in a net tax gain for the city of, uh, $1,166 last year, which was a huge amount of money. And it was a key case and, uh, we thank you for what you did and what you did for the city. Next item you may see on the budgetary numbers is there is an increase as far as on revaluation updating and also on the personal property. Uh, we are currently in a revaluation year with the state Mass Department of Revenue, so they are in, uh, reviewing our books. They're also out in the field doing field reviews. So as part of that, uh, we also have to have the vendors that are approved by the state do a lot more internal reporting and, uh, that is actually submitted to DOR to make sure that all our information is reviewed and approved for our valuations. Uh, it used to be a three-year valuation. It's now a five-year valuation. So now it'll happen every five years. Uh, we'll see a revaluation with the Commonwealth. Um, you'll see that line item, there's about $40,000 in additional funding and that's for the additional work that Division Government Solutions, who's the approved vendor with the state, uh, for all the reporting and doing, uh, spot checks, um, on the parcels. Uh, the other line item you may see is on the personal property and that's a substantial increase of, um, from 30,000 up to 75,000. So what happens there, we're actually, uh, working with the mayor and DOR. Uh, that number for one year was going to be a lot higher, uh, due to COVID and help with vendors. Uh, we worked with the Department of Revenue saying, you know, things should be coinciding now with the, uh, five-year recertification. It's, uh, helpful to not only the state to make sure they get the most updated information, but also as far as on for the city and controlling costs. So instead of having a hundred and something thousand dollar budget item this year, uh, they agreed with us that it would be spread over, uh, five-year term with this way, where they'll be doing their annual, but they'll also be doing existing accounts, reviewing those fully, a certain percentage, and then additional new accounts. So by spreading that over the five-year, we get a complete and by, uh, altering the years, it, uh, kind of gets things worked more out of the COVID and things in a more positive direction. Uh, let's see. And pretty much on budgetary, you may also see that on the commercial appraisal position, it is still to be determined. Uh, we spent over two years advertising heavily, uh, not only through, you know, International Association of Assessing Offices, Mass Association of Assessing Offices, Appraisal Institute, Mass Board of Real Estate Appraisers, uh, the M, uh, MMA, Mass Municipal Association. Um, working with HR, they couldn't believe we didn't get any, they actually put it out on Indeed and we still didn't get anything back. So, uh, it's been very difficult. Um, so what of actually, uh, working with the mayor, HR, and also, um, Local 25 is seeing if we can do something where we get a lower level and it's kind of following what the national standards are, where it'd be like a commercial appraisal level one, where they may not be able to be doing litigation and some of the more complex assignments. And unfortunately, that's still lie on my lap. But as far as on getting someone in that can learn that and, uh, the basic things as far as income expense reports, sales question is going out for, um, actually inspecting the properties and measuring the properties, uh, to, and then hopefully growing someone in that position. Um, the only thing is we hope that we don't get them trained and then they go elsewhere. Uh, there's been kind of a mass exodus going on with differing assessing departments leaving one community, going to another, uh, just because of the amount of openings throughout the state. So, um, those are the highlighted things. You'll see a few other minor adjustments and that's basically for, um, increased costs for some software and some other smaller items such as Mobile Assessor, which is our, uh, computer system that we utilize out in the field when we're doing, uh, field measurements, photos and, uh, site descriptions. Uh, are there any questions?
Councilor Dillon.
John, thank you. Um, I touched base with the mayor a little bit about this. Looks like we're past the abatement stage at this point.
Uh, the abatement stage we're past, as far as them filing at the ATB, that has not been completed yet because after they, uh, the filing deadline stops, the petitioner has up to three months to actually file with the tax court.
So...
So that wouldn't be till probably the end of July before that deadline has happened.
Do you see a lot of these commercial properties that took a hit during the COVID, coming in and looking to us for relief?
So, uh, as far as on, uh, abatement applications for commercial, we had 19 of them this year. Uh, we had 17 personal property and then, uh, residential abatements, we had 14. The commercial ones, uh, I'd say about four or five of them, uh, they actually, after we went over the information that we utilize in valuing the property and going over the information that they supplied and them a little understanding, a little bit more about what the process is. So if it's, you know, say if you're fiscal 23, that date of valuation is actually January 1st, 2022. So a lot of it's educating the public, which we do a very good job of, as far as on them understanding what mass appraisal is and the dates of value. Uh, so as far as on commercial hotels, they took a big hit last year. They are rebounding. Um, they're not rebounding at the level we would like, uh, but they are improving. And one of the big trends, and I'm sure everyone's seen this, is if you're a resort destination, Cape, you know, coast to Maine, those hotels are having the best years they've ever had just during COVID, people getting away. Uh, Boston's still struggling, Cambridge is still struggling. And what happens is we actually benefit from how Boston does. So if Boston's jammed, everyone, if they're working their way towards 93, basically they've got Somerville that, uh, has a few more sizable amounts of hotels now, so there's, uh, new construction there, competition. Medford only has two. And then basically you come to Woburn and you have a choice of, you know, 12 with, really 13 with the dual-service hotels. So, uh, office surprisingly, uh, has held its own. Uh, we expected to see a substantial dip with downsizing of offices in COVID. Um, we haven't seen it yet where the tenants are giving out a tremendous amount of space. Um, and speaking with Unicorn Park, they actually benefited a little bit from, um, downtown Boston spaces where they did not want to renew there, but they wanted to have satellite smaller office that people could go and, uh, do the location of 12893, it was a central point and without particular parks right off the highway, they, it was a win for them. So they've actually had a few of those, which was good to hear. So office was not as bad as we thought. So office was not as bad as we thought. Industrial, industrial is absolutely rocking it. Every industrial player wants to be coming to Woburn, and it's just, sales have increased. Last year, we had about 10% increase in industrial. You'll probably be seeing at least that again this year. Sales have been there, rents have been there. And there's a particular trend going on now, where there's been a lot of investment money. Oliver Capital's one of them, that have been buying up a substantial amount, and they are backed by Bain Capital. And what they're doing is they're coming in, buying up a lot of the portfolio, and where they're almost going to be controlling markets. So by controlling markets, you'll control rents. So with the market being so strong, that's one of the things that are happening there. Then, of course, with industrial, we've got the last mile logistics. So more and more, everyone wants their product today. So a lot of these warehouses are popping up, and, you know, the demand is there so that storage, so that they can get these products to the place the same day, so. Industrial's doing great. Biotech, it's still going great. There's so much development out there with biotech that, you know, where's the future going to be for it, will be too much down the line? But, I mean, Woburn's seeing it. Look at the Raytheon buildings now, just got bought up, bought, purchased by Alexandria. Those two buildings, they want to make a mega complex for biotech. So 195 Presidential Way, they already own those. It's completely full with arguments of biotech tenants. Now they bought the Raytheon, and the key thing there is the Transportation Center. Like we're seeing with the apartments and everything else, it's really going to be a big draw for that area.
I appreciate the explanation and the breakdown for the public as well. And now just a statement, as I've a couple times come up to your office with a constituency, and by myself, a constituents' questions, and always very professional, welcoming, and I got the information quickly. And I know I speak for the community when I say that, much appreciated.
Thank you.
Councilor Gaetly.
You're doing a great job.
Thank you.
You took over for Andy, and he was a good man.
He still is.
He was well attuned to what was going on in the city. New growth to us.
Yep.
The next four or five years, the foreseeable future is going to be huge in this town, in this city. It's very important to us and our budget to identify all the new growth. And you see what's going on over in the industrialplex, and you see what's going on with the Vale and Merrimack and New Boston Street. It's gone crazy.
Yep.
And some of the indications that I have from phone calls from people that I know in the business, they're all looking for a place in Woburn to go. You know, they're looking for areas that they can put townhouses in there, biotech, whatever. Is there any, you know, if any land that's around this, this, this? I get these calls. I say, you're the call of Board of Assessors or something. I don't know what's still out there. I know what we're doing right now, but maybe a plot of land around the corner over there that's got 12,000 square feet. All of a sudden, it's worth nothing, now it's worth a half a million dollars, you know, so. You guys do a good job, and like I said, the new growth for the city for our taxes is going to be huge.
I mean, residential for the city is just, I never thought I'd see the levels that it's gone to. I mean, has anyone ever thought they'd be seeing million-dollar homes in the city of Woburn?
Yeah.
And they're not a million, they're a million three, million four, million five. They just had a closing, a million six eighty over on the west side, so. Woburn has been discovered. I mean, we have people that are coming in from outside the community, coming up, and they cannot believe what they get for their dollar in the city of Woburn. Trash, the library, no sports user fees, I mean, it goes on and on that they compliment. And they, you know, trash, they say, I put anything out and they take it. They're so happy with what they're getting for value in this city. And for better, for worse, we've been recognized, and people are willing to pay a premium now to be in this community. And, you know, that'll be reflected in the values with the way the residential market's going this year.
I've had a lot of comments on our open space, and a lot of people that know me and all my family and stuff, they're in love with the pond, you know, when they come out, they come from Somerville, they come from Cambridge, they come from Oxford, they come from Orange Math. They love the pond, they love to walk around the pond. You know, and they want to buy houses close to it. It's, like I said, we've been found. And I was, with the knowledge you guys have and what the city council has, do it slow. We have what we have right now, let's work on it together, and look to the future, what we're going to do. I know there's some stuff going on down the ward, too, that's going to come up to you guys, with some townhouses here and there. It's gone crazy. And everyone says you, we're going to recession. I don't see it, with all that money floating around out there, so. Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Tell Andy I said I.
I will.
Councilor Concanon.
John, just a quick follow-up on that commercial appraiser position you have open. Do you feel like the salary we're offering is reasonable? Or is it just a matter that aren't bodies out there interested?
So for the position with the commercial appraiser, a lot of it's just the licensing. You know, the certified general licensing, and then we look for the MAA or the CAA, which is an assessing designation, because they're dealing, that position's dealing with complex properties, hotels, biotech. So there's a lot of different things that that position, you know, requires. And as far as on certified general licenses in the state, they're declining, you know. People like myself, gray hair, and there's not a lot of young people going into it, because in order to get your licensing, it can take you four to five years, so.
Are you aligned with what others are paying?
For that position, no, I think it's, you know, it's in the level that it should be attractive if someone had it. I think it's just more of the number of licensed people out there. And people that are in the private market, to be honest with you now, are making so much more money. I mean, the downtown appraisers I speak with, they're doing very well, and living very well. And so that's the reason why I was trying to say, you know, we definitely need help in our office, and if it's something that we can go with a level, a lower level, calling it Level One, where we can hopefully grow them into that position, and kind of teach them how, you know, we do a very good job of that in Woburn. A lot of communities talk about, we have, you know, for INE questionnaires, we have them for hotels, we have them for billboards. We have property specific, where a lot of other communities may have just one standard INE, so there's a lot more involved, what we do here, and we're proud of that.
Thanks.
Anyone else, any other questions? Okay, John, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for everything that you do.
Thank you, John.
Next on the agenda, we have the Woburn Public Library, page 53. Hi, welcome.
Hi, everybody.
How are you tonight?
Well, we'll see, I'm doing okay. It's my first meeting. I have to say that it was quite an education just hearing everybody, and it reminded me of a, I was just at a conference, and there was this program that some of the towns are doing called Municipal Bootcamp, and it's a program where all the departments learn about what everyone else is doing. So it's something I'm actually going to talk to the mayor about. It made me realize, because there's so much, I learned a lot tonight.
Yeah.
So.
Great.
It was good that I was near the end of the program. So, so I just want, so our budget is level funded, and I have some slides that I'm going to show you about what's happening at the library. I thought, the library's a different kind of a department in the city, and there's, you know, a lot there, and I just want to share some of what's happening there. So we put together a slideshow, but I just have a little intro. I know it's not news to you all, that the Public Library has come through a very difficult couple of years. We reopened to the public, you know, the new building, well, expanded building, on March 16, 2019, and exactly one year later, March 16, 2020, the library, like every other department, business, et cetera, closed due to the pandemic and Governor Baker's orders to shelter in place. And in addition to this situation, the library went through a leadership challenge even after reopening to the public in August of 2020. In March of 2021, Chuck Flaherty, who you met last year here, came on board to serve as interim director, and I assumed the role of assistant interim director. We served together, working very hard to reboot the library services to the community. Chuck left in August, and the mayor appointed me assistant director at that time. And then in September, the trustee board appointed me director of the library. And I have to say that I am humbled and honored to serve in this role, which had been a dream job for some time for me, and so the moral here is like, hold fast to your dreams, because, you know, I didn't know it would happen the way it did, but it did. So there was a lot that needed to be fixed, and when Chuck and I first started working together. And since then, myself and assistant director Megan Cass, who came on board in November of 2021, an extremely, can't stress that enough, hardworking and committed staff have been working very hard to bring back much-needed and asked-for requested services. Between May 2021 and January of this year, we hired 11 new staff members to replace staff who left and fill outstanding vacancies. So we've put together this slideshow, just to give you.
Hermani.
I'm calling it State of the Library.
Hang on one second, Hermani, can we connect?
Yeah, I'm going to connect, and.
Why?
I don't know what's happening here. Yeah, I did, I plugged it in, it's up there.
It's up. Thank you, John. Yeah, Lindsay gave her a hand beforehand. Really? You missed it. Didn't want you to.
I don't know why you mean this. This is my biggest fear, that the technology would fail me.
No, you're doing great.
Here we go. There we go, so there's our beautiful Republic Library, and we're calling this the 2022 overview. So by the numbers, everyone's doing by the numbers. We were getting such good numbers that we, in January, I told the staff that I wanted to measure everything possible that we could measure, because I think it's a way to show, you know, just for ourselves and also for the community to see what's happening. So this is January through April, and this is something that was put together by our archivist. We have another version of it, and so we have this on our website. And I'll show, and it does break down, I'll show you. So take a minute to look at some of those numbers. So, so if you look at this slide, size of the building, our population, and that's our operating budget for 2022, 2021, 2020. And I want you to, we're going to come back to this, but as you'll see, our operating budget went down last, this fiscal year. And, you know, it could be an issue for us coming up, but, I want to see. Again, these are the amount of visitors we've had in the library, the amount of questions answered, materials circulated, cardholders and new cardholders. And, you know, we literally get over 100 new cardholders every month. Instagram, Twitter, website visited. We have been still unable to get back the use of our Facebook page. We're still working on it, but after the last administration, we've been struggling to get back access to that page. And so we think we are close now, but it's been, it's taken almost a year. And hopefully, we will get that back, because that's how we hear back from a lot of the community, from Facebook, and they can talk to us that way. But meanwhile, you know, we're really pushing out a lot of information on Instagram and encouraging people to use the website. We recently also started a YouTube channel. That's not on here, but that's been, you know, something else. Another way to communicate with the community. This is our public computer usage, print jobs, database searches, Wi-Fi sessions. It's a lot, it's a busy place. These are our programs, our attendees, and study rooms reserved. We're getting a lot more asks for the study rooms, spaces. One of the things I really want to do is open that library up to the community, and like the Richardson Gallery, I know, Councilor Concanon, you were there when they had the Road to the Revolution. And so that's a space that we can use for those kinds of programs, music programs, and another beautiful space, and so we're really trying to have as many groups in as possible, city groups, nonprofit groups, English, you know, English language learners, we're going to be doing more of that, because I just was, I just, I applied for and was, you know, won a grant to do some literacy work and citizenship, and that's going to kick off in the fall. So that's going to be a great thing. And this is just our organization chart. You can see. And this is with the new, you know, we're in the new era now, where the mayor is, you know, in charge of the library and the trustees, and then on down. So what's coming up, Juneteenth. On June 18, the library is really very involved with that, as is the city, and SCI is sort of heading it up. I know you heard about that recently when Phil was here. Summer reading set to kick off on June 25. And we're expecting it to be very busy. Demand for programming is going to increase. It's one of the things that we have to consider looking forward, because, you know, we have this big, beautiful building, and we have all these spaces and all these expectations, and so we, you know, as we look to the future, we want to be mindful of that. The theme this year is Read Beyond the Beaten Path, and we have summer reading for all ages. This is the first year that we are offering a summer reading program for adults. So you should all sign up. And if you don't have a library card, come on over. So we're going to have a kickoff event, and we're going to have a local author book fair at that time, because we've been getting people asking about that, so we think that's going to be fun. Lawn games, raffles, going to make it a fun date, it's going to be a Saturday. And these are some of the programs, I'll run through the, some of the things that are happening, you know, movie nights and different things for different age groups during the week. Novel Ideas Book Club, that's a book club that I've been moderating for, well, since I've been working at the library, and so we have a lot of fun with that. That has really grown, too. Other fun programs, gardening, balloon twisting, kite making, interesting things, so. And this is all on the website. So if you're interested, and I really encourage you to take a look at the website and see all the wonderful things that are happening in your public library. Some of the challenges facing us, programming and staffing shortages. This has been ongoing, but as we seek to serve more people, it's going to become an issue, and so you guys are probably going to be hearing more from me on that, because it definitely, it's definitely a need. This is what we offer because of our staffing, and you'll see some other slides on that, that we offer on a weekly basis. But that's going to go up during the summer, because we're also going to be bringing in some outside performers, outside programs to help to. So this is how we compare, total number of programs offered. And, and as you'll see, and I think the next slide, it's directly related to staffing, the staffing that we have. And see, this is how we compare. So the blue on the bottom, they're full-time employees, and we are pretty much similar to most of the libraries that are similar to us. But if you look at the orange boxes, you'll see that's where the difference is, is in the part-timers. And it's a direct relationship between the staffing and the programs that we can offer. It really goes hand in hand. And so we have expanded the Richardson Building by 207%. And so we have new available programming spaces. We have the Jones Maker, Jones Family Maker space, the Write Out Family Children's Story and Craft Room, and the Programming Room. So in order for us to be able to use all that space and run programs, we can't do it with the same amount of staff we used, we had when we were in a, you know, smaller space. So this is some, these are some figures Megan put together on staffing limitations. You know, we're, how we're open, how much we're open, full-time staff. This is what, you know, what we need on a daily basis. Children's department has to borrow staff from other departments for 28.5 hours per week to maintain minimal desk coverage, programming and off-desk tasks. And the simple things, like if there's a program going on, you still need somebody at the desk in the children's room. Ideally, two people in the children's room, but we're making it work with one other person in that room while a program is going on. If we have an outside person coming to do a program, we also need to have a staff member in the room, you know, just because of, you know, our policies in the room when that's happening. So... And this is just different kinds, the two main types of programs that we have. And what it costs if we were to, you know, have all of those programs led by, you know, brought, if we brought performers in for all of those. These programs run from between 300 and 500 for a 30- to 60-minute program. That's just what the market rate is. And that is what it would cost us. But of course, we don't wanna do that, because we have staff that can do programs. So, but it requires at least library staff time. And we have to vet performers, we have to hire and schedule. And if it's an experienced person, we have, you know, staff time to prepare the program. So that has to account in our day and our staff time. And when staff, of course, when they're running programs, they have to have time, we call it off-desk time, so that they could prepare the programs. And this is what it takes. These are just some of the steps, some of the details. You know, you design a program, you get to get the materials, practice, schedule, market. And one thing with programs in the library too is you need to give yourself some lead time so that the word gets out to enough people, so people come to the program. So we try to plan, market at four weeks out if it's a new program. If it's a program that's ongoing and people know about it, it might just be a new session, then that's not so much of an issue. And so we've been getting a lot of requests for more adult programming. In fact, just this week, I had one person in my office talking to me about it. I've had a number of phone calls and emails and things that we wanna have, people wanna see happen in the library. And you'll see a little later when I show you the information on the strategic plan. So what would be ideal for the Woburn Public Libraries? If we had some, one person who was just focusing on programming and outreach. And it's common among libraries, you know, that's a position that's really common. So that would be a dream for us to have that position in our library for adult programs. And so here are some of the, well, I just told you that if we could have somebody doing programs, and this would be their responsibilities. Of course, anytime you hire new staff in a library, you're always doing other things, but at least that person could focus on programming, sourcing, and outreach, and publicity, et cetera. And so these are some, some things that we can do to help. And right at the bottom there, just, you know, we're looking at, yeah, we can, we need money for the first two, but on the bottom there, we can source local volunteers to tap into the community talent, because we have a lot of talent in our community now. And I've talked to a number of people who I think would be interested in coming to offer a program. In fact, we had a woman who lives in town recently offer to do a program on college, a college prep program for, you know, teens and their parents, and as a free program to the library. So that happened, and she's gonna come and do another session in the fall. And, you know, I'm sure there are other people out there, perhaps some of you, who could come over and, you know, offer a program to the community. So, yeah, so those are things we're thinking about. So this is our budget, it's level-funded from last year. You know, I put in a number of increases, thinking about some of the issues with staffing and some of the things we wanna do. And now that we have a bigger staff, one of the things we have to do for staff is, you know, professional development, et cetera. So with this budget this year, you know, because it's level-funded, you know, we're probably gonna have to apply for a waiver to get state aid. And are you guys familiar with state aid funds to libraries? So the state provides funds to libraries, but you have to, you know, meet certain requirements. And so these are the requirements. So the municipal appropriation requirement has to be a certain percentage. And that's the, that's how they calculate it there. And so they take the last three fiscal years, your last three years of budget, divide by three, and then they multiply by 1.025 to get that requirement. And in our case, this is what the number should be. This is what the budget should be to qualify. It doesn't mean we can't get state aid, but we just have to go through a different route to get state aid. This is, this, if we had our budget funded at this, then, you know, it's an easy process, fill out the forms, put in the numbers, and do that. So I've not applied for a waiver. Last two years, last year we were fine, but we just came in, the two years before were fine, because you could see the difference in the numbers here. So this is actually a big challenge for us. And I don't know what's gonna happen. We'll see. And then we have new trustees coming on board, which is good, because that means that as the trustee board expands to, what if the limit is nine, we could, they could start having their committee meetings and things like that. So we're looking forward to that. And then looking to the future, you may or may not have heard, but we're in the middle of a strategic planning process. And this is just the flow chart. And we are pretty much in this area here. We, a big part of the strategic plan is collecting information from the community. And we have done, we're just finishing up a community survey, and I hope you guys were able to take that survey. We have a strategic planning advisory committee, and Councillor Dillon is on that committee and, you know, done some good work there. And then we're, right now, we are running focus groups. And then we also did a number of interviews with, you know, key stakeholders in the city. And the mayor was one of our interviewees, which was good. So we ran SIR exercises with the staff and the board, and the board and the foundation board. So we did those as well. We did two with the staff and one with, was a joint foundation board and board of trustees. So this is, this tells you what that is. It's just asking people to look to the future and, you know, just assess how, you know, what are some of the things that would affect the library or what the library could provide for the community. We actually hired a consultant to help with this process, which has made it very smooth for me, because there's so much happening in the office. And, you know, there's a lot that we do on our side, but the consultant does a really good job. You know, she'll be pulling all the data together once we have all the data so that we can, you know, make some decisions based on that. And that's the last slide. So, you know, I hope it gives you a little sense of some of the stuff we're doing, working to do, and if you have any questions.
Hermione, can we, can you make a copy of this? Or copies for all the aldermen and get it to...
You mean the slide deck?
Yes, please.
I can send the slide deck. Do you want it as a slide deck?
Oh, no, I'm sorry. I would like copies, actually, on paper.
On paper. Okay. I could do that.
Yes, and give it to Gordon Vincent. Gordon, I was gonna go the other way around. Never mind. I was gonna say Vincent Gordon. I'm like, that's not right. Give it to the city clerk's office, Gordon Vincent. Yeah, okay, great. Thank you. Do we have any, yes, Councillor Concanon?
Just a quick question, the obvious question. What is the explanation for the reduction in the budget this year?
You know, it was a mystery when it happened last year. And I think it, we were coming out of that time, but we did have those monies in the previous two years. We really didn't need them. What has happened this year is because of the reduction, we've gone over budget lines on several line items. I just, I just got the recent readout today. And I'm not sure why it happened, you know, and I... When Chuck came over with the budget last year, that's the first thing I noticed. And I'm not sure. I don't have a good answer, sorry.
Okay, that's all right.
I would like an answer.
I'll ask another source.
Councillor Viola?
Hi, Hermione. How much money are we actually looking at losing by not making that state aid?
Well, you know, it's, this year we got a total of, I think, like 115,000. You get it in two steps. Or was it 75? I mean, it's significant income. And it's income that we, money we can use to help to fund other programs. If something happens during the year, we can use that money for that. And so it's gonna be difficult, especially because we have big plans for the library, and there are things we wanna do, and it would be nice to be able to do them. Now, I'm gonna do everything on my end. Like, I already got that grant to fund that program, because it's really needed in the city. And, you know, I've got the archivist looking at possibly working with somebody from the state for some grant money to do some work in there. You know, those are the kinds of things that, you know, you can use your funds for. We can't use, like, even state aid funds to, like, fund new positions. But, you know, but we can use them for programs. We can use them to help supplement, let's say, our materials budget. But there's also a materials requirement that the state has for us. And, you know, they, over the course of the pandemic, they didn't insist on that, but now we're back to a place where they're wanting us to meet that. And that's like 13% of our, you know, our budget should go to materials. And so there are lots of guidelines that we have to follow. And that's just, those things are in there so that, you know, communities really support their local library as they should. Because as you know, the percentage of the budget, I think ours is like 0.99% of the whole budget of the city. So it's a very small percentage of the budget. And I think the state just wants to make sure that we're getting the support from the city, and then they come alongside and support us some more.
I wanna thank you and your staff for everything that you do. I've heard from many constituents that love going to the library, taking their kids for the programs, the summer reading. So thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Councillor Farullo?
Hermione, I just wanna thank you for your transparency and your openness. It's all by this body. And thank you for leading the recovery efforts over there. I sincerely appreciate it.
Thank you.
Councillor Dillon?
Hermione, how are you tonight?
I'm good.
How long now have you been the director? Less than a year?
It's coming up on a year.
It's coming up on a year. You've done a great job over there.
Thank you.
I'm very privileged to be the liaison from this illustrious council.
And a volunteer too.
And a volunteer, and a patron. I'm very privileged. My favorite part of the library, it's such a unique place in this manner that with that blue card I have in my pocket and walk through the door, everyone's the same. Everyone gets to go whatever's available at the library. It's not like Fenley Park, where you have bleachers and you have the grandstands and you have the box seats. It's such a welcoming place. It does such great service to our community. Maybe some of the older council members, like Councillor Gately and Councillor Farullo, the two older ones than I am. They remember, as I do, when you walked into the library and it was a building of books, and you whispered. Now you have the children's room in there, you have the young teens' room in there. It just is for the whole community, and it serves such a great purpose. During last year, probably, most likely at one of the peak times in our community that a lot of people needed help, Mayor Galvin, State Rep Pagety, had a tenants' preservation program there. And we helped 22 people that were probably at our most risk, citizens that we had, and helped them with rental assistance, food insecurities, and heating assistance. And that was at the library. And I feel that if it was anywhere else, maybe wouldn't have, people wouldn't have felt as comfortable coming there. So again, just a great job you and your staff do, welcoming place, and keep up the good work, and thank you.
And I can't say enough good things about the staff we have. We have an amazing staff, so hardworking. And they're a whole group who came through a very difficult time, and they're still really working hard. So, you know, I appreciate it. If you ever see them, let them know that they, you know, just encourage them. But it's, it's great working with them.
And I'm privileged to work right there beside them, and I see the same as you do. They are good people, hardworking, and they love the library as well. Thank you.
Councillor Demambro?
Hi, Hermione. How are you?
Hi, how are you?
I just have one question. It just keeps rolling around in my head. I looked at that slide, and it looks like we have one of the smallest budgets with the smallest amount that we can, you know, give to the, you know, the children and the adults. Have you ever tried to reach out to the other communities, the other directors, and ask them what their, what their secret is, how they get these budgets? That, you know, like Winchester, I noticed there was a seriously different contrast between the two.
Well, it depends on the community. Some communities, you know, spend more. I mean, that's why I wanted to bring, do the slideshow tonight, so that you all could see what it is. Because sometimes people aren't really clear on everything that's happening and what the library does. And I'll tell you, with this new strategic plan that's gonna be coming out, and you all will see the good information that's gonna come out of there, but it's gonna be stuff that we have to act on. Because now that we have engaged so many people in our community, they wanna know that we're gonna act on it. And it's not just gonna be, we got all this information and we stick it on a shelf, because we can't go and say we can't do it. And so that's something that weighs heavily on me, because I really wanna be able to deliver more. There's more we can do. When the library was built, it was built, billed as the hub of the community. And it really is a place that I want everybody to feel like, you know, they could come to the library. And so some communities just spend more on there. You know, we, people ask on their behalf, you know, so you guys could do that. But yeah, it's, it's, but that said, I think that there's still a lot that we can do that we are going to do, and I'm optimistic.
I thank you.
Anyone else on the council?
No.
Thank you so much, Hermione.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, we have Council on Aging, Woburn Senior Center, on page 50. Hi, Marie, welcome.
Good evening, councilors. How are you?
I'm doing very well.
Good to see everybody. I do not have a slideshow.
Did you bring a card for, bring a membership card for Dick and myself? We're not gonna do a library.
You know what, anytime, we'd be happy to have you. I keep trying to get your dad. I told him he would.
Dillon will get one for you over here.
I'll help you with that.
I did bring the dear newsletter for everyone, though. So I guess I'll just start with that we are level-funded and that there's, of course, the city side of the budget, and then we also have the state funding. And we have the Friends Helping Seniors. So we make it work through all of that. Most of the city budget is for salaries, although we do have all these other items that, particularly the senior taxi program. But it's all level-funded. This year, we're going to utilize some of the funding that we've sort of given back to the general funds because of COVID. We weren't able to do a lot of the trips or volunteer recognition. So on June 16th, we're gonna have a kickoff to summer. You're all invited. I know that Laura McDonald, our program coordinator, who has worked out terrific, she'll be... I know that Lauren McDonald, our program coordinator, who has worked terrific, she'll be there a year in August, so I'm really grateful for her work. She'll be reaching out. We're... You can't do things kind of the way that we used to, so we had the mayor's dinner. We had that as a grab and go, and we didn't do the Red Sox, you know, Spirit Day. We lost the Sons of Italy Hall. So we're going to be doing this outside with a max of 200. We'll get tents. So we're going to be using some of the money in the activities and programs, volunteer recognition, and the dinners and entertainment portion, and have it catered, and then have volunteers help. We've got students and then other volunteers helping to set up and break down and serve the food. But the caterer will cook the food, put the food on the plate. I just have to be so careful, you know, about the way that we do it, so we'd have designated people wearing masks and with gloves, and then just that limits the number of people. It's a shame we can't do it the way we did before, but they've been waiting so long to have a party, so I thought, well, outdoors. And Jim Reel, who... A tent guy who lives in Woburn, I mean, I couldn't believe how expensive tents were. Oh, I thought, oh, I find this guy, we'll rent a tent for the summer. $90,000, some of the prices I got, like $60,000 to $90,000. I couldn't believe it. So, you know, and I just keep looking. We have all this outdoor space out there. So we're going to set up a couple of tents. We've got some music. I forget the company that Amy Beauchamp works for, but her donated some Red Sox tickets. We're going to raffle those off. You'll all be welcome to. We'll raffle off other prizes. Whoever is around and would like to come, we'd love to have you. So it's food, music, and we're going to do some games. Try to do bocce. We'll have some volunteers run some games. Cornhole. And indoors, we'll have some chess. We're calling them tournaments, just organized games and stuff like that. So it should be a good day of fun. And then, well, as far as programming, I know if you look through this month's... The movies, we do Movies and Pizza every Wednesday. That has been a huge hit. We're doing a lot of... We have a group of gentlemen who play pool. We've got our chess and cribbage. All of those are low-cost things, you know. Those things are just social, and people come to play. And the other things that we have, like a new class is called Drums Alive. It's pretty cool. It has a big exercise ball. It's sort of a sensory exercise, but also gets your heart rate up. You can sit in a chair if you like, so it's for everybody seated in a, like, laundry basket with drumsticks. And the instructor, it's kind of aerobic, but you can sit and do it. I mean, I think...
Are you doing it?
It's really fun. That's one of our newest classes. It's really taken off. The zumba is still there. We've got therapy dogs, Stella and Buddy, that come. So we try to do a variety of things. We've got a few other things that are coming up, like sea glass art. So the way that we run it, I saw that Hermine had some of the programs. It is true that some instructors, it's so expensive, so we keep it between the instructor and the students, and it seems to cut a lot of the cost away. So for zumba or whatever, it's $5. Sometimes it's $7, because otherwise, no one could... They wouldn't be able to afford to do it. So, but we do also have senior discussions and things about wellness, protecting brain and memory as we age, and those kinds of things. So I think all in all, we've got a pretty good variety of strength and balance, line dancing, yoga, the gentle stretch. We have a walking group Monday, Wednesday, and Fridays, so... And of course, we're building our pickleball courts, and I think we've run into some of the supply issues with that, with fencing and different things, so it's dragged out a bit, but it's coming along. We're excited about that. This will be our first full year with the garden. That's moving along, and we're looking for... We've got it whittled down. We had advertised for a new transportation coordinator because Hermine stole Michelle Daley. But I don't blame you. She's wonderful. So we've got it whittled down to a few candidates. The transportation coordinator and outreach coordinator positions are now members of the SEI Union, which I thought was fair. They weren't members of the union before. So I fought to get them in, and so now they'll be members of the union. And I will be doing some interviews next week, and I can't say enough about Megan Rodriguez and Lauren McDonald for pitching in to help coordinate the schedule of the vans. And the van drivers are great. I think we'll be adding another van driver. I mean, it's a lot of responsibility, and people change their minds or, you know, I mean, just juggling those schedules for the vans. And we transport a lot of people. I don't have statistics, but I know that as of the end of March, when I was doing the budget report and the goals for the year, we had like 17,000 separate check-ins for the year. So that's not... Could be, it's some of the same people, but it's a lot. I mean, we have a strong, regular crew of people who come in. We did assume City Hall hours, which will really go into effect, so their hours will change from 37.5 to 32.5, same as City Hall July 1st, so we'll work with that. But I'm looking to do more outside, you know. I do have money from the state. As you know, we get $90,000, and we got that this year, still based on the last census, so I'm hoping that would increase. And we pay for a lot of things, the shed out back, the new blinds in the community hall, things like that. Kind of big-ticket items, you know, $5,000 here, $5,000 there, and they pay for a lot of supplies and some programming, but a lot of supplies and things like that, our Comcast account and other things like that, so. I don't know if you have any questions. Oh, one thing that I will say is about the transportation for COA trips. I have recruited a really nice gentleman who is going to help us with that. You know, it was hard getting those back up and running because... And it was tied in through the Friends Helping Seniors somehow. I didn't really understand how it worked, so we're going to try to do it just cleaner with the three different local companies. People are looking to go on trips, but what was happening was they were writing checks. It was getting canceled. They were coming to us, the administration, on trying to get their money refunded, and all those things was just a nightmare. So this gentleman is going to help. We're going to help them advertise the trips because seniors, local seniors want it, and then that way, they can park at the senior center, or the bus can pick them up there, and they can go on their merry way. So we're working on that, and for now, I was... We were planning to just do a couple of local trips, maybe to Gloucester for lunch or something like that, but that's been one of the hardest things. But by and large, everybody's been really good. We've been really lucky with protocols, and of course, Paul Maderos is great, helping us keep things in order and clean to prevent any kind of, like, super-spreader thing. We've kept the numbers low, staggered the use of the rooms. And I'm looking forward to getting that pickleball out there and getting some of the younger seniors interested in what's going on. I think there's a lot of excitement about it. I mean, I haven't tried it yet. We'll see. But I welcome you all to come up for a game of pickleball.
What are the younger seniors? What age does that begin?
Well, I'd say, like, yeah, just like around the 60-ish. 70, 60 to 80.
Okay, so we're not quite there yet.
Yeah, we're... Almost, Jim.
Almost. Counselor Gately.
You guys do a great job up there. You do a great job.
Thank you.
I think one of the best hirees that the mayor made was you to go up there. You straightened that place out pretty good, very good. All the programs you're running and the staff you have up there and the volunteers, you make it all work. You know, you don't have a big, big, fantastic budget.
No.
You make it work.
It's fun.
I have nothing but comments from a lot of people.
Oh, yeah?
I brought a chair up to you a couple of weeks ago, it was brand new, and put it through the door. It's a handicap chair.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I brought that up. That was me.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
People take those and use them.
Yeah.
You know, because the masons are just open on Saturdays, so we do keep some inside, and they come and use them.
Oh, you've got all kinds of programs going on there, and you've got some fantastic truck drivers with Mr. Foley and a few of the other guys who used to work with me down in DPW and stuff.
They're great.
We have a lot of fun with them. Very trustworthy.
Yeah.
Conscientious people. Keep up the good work. It's hard to tell you what to do.
Thank you, counselor.
Programs are all good. Everything's good.
You're always very generous. Thank you.
Counselor Viola.
Thank you. Thank you, Marie, for everything you do, for the programs that you put on for our seniors. I know they love it up there. We deserve to give back to them as we do. One question I have is, what are the hours for June 16th that you...
So 11 to 3:00, with lunch being served at 1:00. And if you think you can come, let us know. I know that Lauren will reach out, but I just want... I figured while I was here, I'd let you know.
Any other questions? Counselor DeMambro.
Marie, you do a great job up there. My dad used to go up there all the time. He loved Wednesday breakfast. That was one of his highlights of the week. I drive through there frequently. The grounds look amazing. The garden, the shed, I've seen everything. Pickleball court, it's in its way. You guys do a great job up there, and there's a lot of seniors up and throughout Woburn and around the surrounding towns. They really appreciate it.
Thank you.
I appreciate everything you guys do up there. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. We have... The Rotary will be sponsoring a breakfast. They really missed the breakfast, but it really was a free-for-all. You know, any with volunteers, it depended on who was there. There were a couple of... You can't run it like that. So we've been looking for sponsors, so Rotary, I think they got some Cummings money, so they're going to sponsor a breakfast in July. And we're going to be looking for other people to sponsor it to.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Counselor Dillon.
Marie, I've been fortunate enough to be over there and help you guys out, yourself, Lauren, and Megan, and Paul.
Yes, you have.
And the others I don't personally know, but they're great. You have a great team there. You click well together.
Yeah, we do.
You all care about each other.
Yeah.
And I thank you for taking care of our seniors that at this stage of their game, they deserve everything that we can provide for them and make them truly their golden years. I often say, if it wasn't for our seniors and our veterans, we all wouldn't have the great life that we have because they worked so hard to get it to the point where we enjoyed the benefits of their labor. So you do important work. Keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Marie, I'd just like to say thank you. I think you're doing a fabulous job, especially with everything that you've had to go through, the adjustments with COVID, the programs. I just love the idea of the pickleball court. That's why I'm asking about ages. I like to play myself. But the trips, being able to introduce those again.
Yeah.
The seniors just love it. They're not looking for anything extravagant.
No, right.
They just want to go where there's a nice view, get a little something to eat, be out with other people, and so that would be wonderful.
Yes.
So I want to thank you. You're doing a fabulous job. Also, the booklets that we get in with the information, just beautifully done, the photos on the front.
Megan Rodriguez does those. She does a really good job. She went out of her way to make sure that it was clear and more legible, more white space. A lot of them are crowded.
Easily read. It's, yeah, definitely an improvement, really nicely done. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank all of you. Thanks a lot.
Thank you, Marie.
Bob.
Okay, last on the agenda is the Veteran Services. Welcome, Bob. Come on in, page 51.
Thank you. Good evening, councilmembers. So as far as the Veterans Agent budget, we're pretty well-funded, level-funded there. There was a slight uptick on the United Veterans Council, and that was around flags. It's $2,000. And with the amount of youth, the bigger the flag, obviously, the aesthetics on it, the weather, they get pretty torn up. It's mainly up in Farulo Field, so the flag's all up in Farulo. We just got... I just put in the submitted for the new flags up there. That bill alone was 2911. So I do have some funds to appropriate to get rid of that, but moving forward next year, obviously, each year, the bigger the flags, the longer they're going to stay up there. We're going to try to keep them up there quite a while. But other than that, it's well-funded, and I think we're pretty straightforward unless anyone...
Do we have any questions?
Any questions.
Counselor Dillon.
Thank you for the nice program you put on Monday.
Oh, thank you.
It was a privilege to be involved in that, and again, the veterans, the servicemen and women that sacrificed so much, give us our good lifestyle that we're able to live every day here. And I appreciate you looking after them and doing whatever you can, and welcome aboard. Your reputation precedes you as being caring, hard-working, and I know you'll do a great job.
Very much appreciated, and thank you for your attendance as well. Thank you.
Counselor Gately.
Hello there. How are you?
I'm fine, thanks, sir.
Can't you see me?
Oh, yeah, I don't hear that well.
I got that problem too. Everybody's hearing it. How many people now are you taking care of?
Right now, we have 45, sir.
Forty-five?
Forty-five. Are we talking strictly Chapter 115?
Yeah.
Strictly Chapter 115, 45, sir.
Okay, how about spouses? How about the survivors?
Family members?
Family members?
That's all-inclusive.
Forty-five?
Forty-five on Chapter 115, yes, sir.
Oh, okay. I must be missing something. Yeah, we used to have like 150, 200 people that were getting benefits from the Veterans Administration.
So there's 45 total.
Forty-five total now.
Go through our immunosystem, yes, sir.
We've lost a lot of people over the last...
I just lost two more in the past two days.
Yeah, wow, God. You do a good job. It's a hard... It's a tough job. It's hard to do.
It's compartmentalizing, that's for sure, time management. But it's great to see the amount of folks that come in there, the amount of support, particularly from the senior center as well, volunteerism, other veterans coming in to help out other veterans, rides, et cetera. It's truly inspiring to see up there.
75% of what you spend is still reimbursable by the state?
Yes, sir.
Good luck. You do a good job. Like, I know a lot of veterans. My dad was one of them. Passed away last October. I know a lot of veterans, you know, World War II in Korea, passing in Vietnam. It's just sad.
Unfortunately, we're losing a lot of them, Counselor Gately. You know, there was 16 million at the end of World War II, and it's down to close to 200,000 now.
Well, they did their part, made us free. All you can do is say thank you to them and their families, people like you that want to make sure they get the benefits they have coming to them. Thank you much.
Thank you, sir.
Counselor Viola.
Bob, thank you again, once again, for the Memorial Day ceremonies that we had. I was proud to be there with you, much with our fellow councilors. Just glad that we have somebody in the position that you have now that'll take care of our veterans going forward.
Thank you.
Counselor Farulo.
I was just really impressed by your speech. You put through the numbers to put things into perspective.
Yes.
It was just to put things in perspective, the number of veterans, the number of people buried, the number of flags. It sort of really put a focus on it.
That's very much appreciated. Thank you, sir.
Any other questions for Bob? Oh, yes, Counselor DeMambro.
Thank you for Monday. That was a great ceremony. That was unbelievable. And also, I noticed the flags. I noticed it on my father's grave. It's a nice, beautiful flag. It was nice and large, larger than years of the past, so I appreciate that, and I thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you for the flags that you'll be putting up and maintaining and putting up over at Farulo, the memorial.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you so much, Bob.
Thanks, Bob.
Thank you so much. A pleasant evening.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it.